This special meeting of the Elizabeth Township Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, December twenty eighth, twenty twenty one to order. Can I please have a stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Plisner. Commissioner Beckelwitz. Commissioner Aldieri.
Here.
Commissioner Roderick.
Here.
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Roderick.
President. We have no executive session. We have public comment. Scott Taylor. By the way, Mr. Merkunis is on the line as well. Matthew, there?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. I'll try to speak live to you.
Oh, you got your. I think we got that. Check if it's on.
Perfect. Good evening, folks. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Good evening.
Scott Taylor, three oh four Mohawk Drive. Just quickly, want to time them on the expenditure item number four. Motion to pay Nicholas Algeri, Penn State intern, a $2,000 stipend for three hundred hours of marketing and administrative services in calendar year twenty twenty two. Because we've heard nothing to date about this, no discussions or the needs for this, I'm hoping we hear, public hears what we're going to be spending the money for. When this came about, what the need is, why a stipend versus a payroll? Is it paid upfront at the end? What's the $300? Who determined that? Was it advertised to anybody else or is this just going to go to a city commissioner's son? So hopefully we hear a lot of discussion about that.
Thank you. We'll address it. Thank you. Patty Hart.
Patty Hart for Lake Douglas, Michigan. I have a question on the budget where the American Rescue Plan, it's telling us that we have over a million dollars coming into the American Rescue Plan. Then it says that we have six hundred and seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty eight expenses. How do we know what's going to be paid in the expenses and what's the difference between the two of them for number one? So that's my first question. My second question on the budget is that there's nothing in there that talks about community development. Since we just did this comprehensive plan, I was a little shocked that there wasn't anything in the budget plan that said, you know, this is for community development and this is how much we're going to do for that. So those were the two things on the budget plan. And then I had on the resolution, it's a lot of money and it's, it sounds great, but is, what are we going to do there? Do we have a plan for that money? It looks like we are going to be doing the labor on it. So, I mean, like, there's nothing out there like on our website that's telling us what we're doing for this, all this money for this resolution. We've talked about making, you know, looking for money, but what are we doing for it? Where's the plan? Can we see it? You know, can we get involved in this? It sounds great, but, so those are my questions and if you can answer those questions, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, George Dukic.
George Dukic, one twenty five Valley View Drive. I'm here to ask questions related to the resignation this evening. My questions are, one, Matt, I know you're on the phone, so Mr. Merkunis, what process did you use? Will that information be released to the public? And the question to all these commissioners here is, this in the last two weeks or four weeks has been basically brought up, but how long have you all known this? Has anybody else known this? My question. Because I have to say transparency-wise right now, I'm going to make this shrinky. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Amy.
I just, no controversy tonight, I just want to wish all the commissioners, chief of police, everybody in the room a Merry Christmas, a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Walker.
Well, I want to try to have a discussion here with the other local commissioners regarding sewer rate increase. To the public's information, we are borrowing up to $20 million from Penn Vest to complete the forced main project to include the two pump stations and then ultimately decommissioning the sewage treatment plant and then the placement of an EQ tank. Penn Vest has mandated that January tenth, that our rates increase at least $5.82 per each rate payer. And so I did quite a bit of investigation on how to go about this. And we have fifty-three-hundred-and-fifty accounts in our township and that includes 5,134 residential, 218 commercial. So multiplying fifty-three-fifty times five-eighty-two comes out to an increase in rate at the very minimum of $29,500 per month. Now, that does nothing at all to help us improve our sanitary system. We have not had a rate increase in this township for sanitary since at least 2014. And it might have been before that. I was unable to determine when the last rates were set. I've actually been told that the last rates were set in post seven, but I couldn't find anything to that effect. Currently, our rates are $42 a month, minimum, two thou-, what, forty-two dollars, forty-two dollars a month minimum for up to 2,000 gallons a month usage. And then $7.50 per thousand gallon of usage after that. Now, raising it five-eighty-two, let's just call it six, would take it to forty-eight bucks minimum. But again, that does nothing, nothing at all to help us improve the system or get ready for the next Penn Vest rate increase, which is mandated for January of 2023. That increase has been mandated at $13.25. Now, these are some pretty scary numbers, folks. We have really, the township in general has really been lax in paying attention to our sanitary rate. And this is what we get when we don't pay attention. We currently have fourteen-hundred-and-thirty customers that are being treated by Pennsylvania American Water Company in Keysport. Their rate is $9.50 per gallon, and you can bet that's going to go up. We currently have eleven-hundred-and-seventy customers that are going to Elizabeth Borough Municipal Authority. Their rate is $35 minimum and $8 per thousand with zero gallons, which when you do the math on that is actually higher than what we're currently paying. So those eleven-hundred-and-seventy customers that are in our township being treated at EBMA, the rest of us are subsidizing their sewage because EBMA is charging us more than we're collecting. That's really upside down. Elizabeth Township currently has $268,000 in the sanitary account for capital improvements. Capital improvements would mean fixing things. Right now, there's a project in Kite's Hollow, which that repair may go to a half a million dollars. We don't know, but it could get crazy. There's zero dye test, zero area-wide dye testing that has been done. There's been zero pipelining done since the sanitary board was dissolved in 2014. We currently have $1.2 million in delinquent sanitary accounts. Before COVID, that was somewhere around $350,000. We are behind the eight ball. We have to raise these rates. I did a, I did a couple of different, I did a couple of different models to try to present to the board some different ways that we could raise these rates and hopefully do it fairly across the board. Because the last thing that I want to see, or any of these commissioners want to see is the low-usage customers getting hammered. Currently, we have many, many customers that are under that $2,000 or 2,000 gallon per month rate. So they're paying $42. But why? Because they don't use much water. Low-income people, we've got to protect them. So as the commissioners can see, what I proposed in the first structure was to raise that minimum to $48, drop it to 1,000 gallons included. Change the usage rate from 1,001 to 2,000 gallons to $8. From 1,001 to 4,000 would be nine, and greater than 4,000 gallon would be a ten. I had legal tax modeled that, and what they did was they plugged those numbers into our existing usage. That would generate, just changing that model was continued same rate, that model would generate an additional $80,000 a month. But remember, twenty-nine-five of that's going to Penn Vest. But that does put six, that does put about approximately $50,000 into our sanitary budget that can be used to get ahead of what's going to happen to us next January when Penn Vest does it to us again. Well, not does it to us again, this is what we have to do. We have to do this. So I'm ready to entertain any and all questions because I've really learned a lot about this.
Cal, do you want to go over what the municipalities near us are charging for sewage rate now?
I can briefly do that.
Because I think we're lower than all of them, if I'm not mistaken. I think we're lower than all of them right now.
Yeah, so I don't have this information in front of me because it was something that Andrew had looked up last year when we talked about this. And he had, he had set up a list of surrounding municipalities. There were fourteen or eighteen on that list. And Elizabeth Township was in the bottom third all the way across. And it's, again, primarily because it's not been, we haven't raised our rates since who knows when.
Cal, the other thing, we were in the budget finance meeting, we talked about since COVID, the number of delinquencies has just skyrocketed. And we talked to Matt about possibly advertising the delinquents, if there were so many days late and so many dollars late. So I think that's something we should probably move forward with.
Yeah, it's sometimes the threat of that embarrassing delinquency can perhaps motivate people to start paying their money. Again, for public knowledge, Pennsylvania American Water Company sent everybody a usage bill, and then that information goes to legal tax services. So that's how our sanitary bills are prepared. I think everyone in this room knows that. However, when somebody doesn't pay their sanitary bill, legal tax service will threaten them once they shut off of their water. And they're given quite a, quite a bit of leeway to get back in line, quite a bit of leeway that we really don't have to give them, but they do. They give them a thirty-day, a thirty-day notice. If there's no movement on their account, then they're given another ten-day, okay, it's going to happen, notice, and then it's finally shut off. Now, during the winter months, December, January, February, and March, Pennsylvania American Water Company has a moratorium on that. And so they will do it only if the township accepts responsibility for what might happen in the instance that somebody has a boiler system in their house and the water shut off and then their pipes freeze. Pennsylvania American Water doesn't want to be responsible or liable for the repair of all of that, of that structure. And so it's up to the township to decide whether or not to waiver that moratorium, which we're not going to do that. We can't. So we're looking at for months more, people still not paying their bills. So this 1.24 million that isn't paid now, it's not going to get paid anytime soon.
Is there a process that legal tax service provides for like sending bills to collecting them to an agent for collection?
They are the agent.
They, they have no other authority? They just do it on their own?
She doesn't know how to answer that one, pardon.
That's something.
Their, their, their threat of water shut off is huge.
But if you can't do it?
Well, they can't do it until, they can start that, they can start that process in February because it takes thirty to sixty days for that to move forward. But they won't be shutting anybody's water off until after March thirty-first.
And the other thing that's a possibility too is this board controls a threshold of shut offs too. So you could even lower that, like, you know, right now, I think it's a thousand dollars. You could lower it to $500. You know what I mean? Then that, that starts a process sooner for some of these shut offs.
Well, actually, Rob, it's, it's a hundred dollars and sixty days overdue.
It's a hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars.
I thought it was a thousand.
Sixty days overdue. Just had this discussion.
Wow. Yeah. And I do know, like, we all got the phone calls, you know, when people, when they're faced with a shut off, they end up finding a way to pay that bill. I mean, that's, that, that's, you know, but, but until they're faced with a shut off, that's, that's what the issue is, though.
But at this point, we can't, you know, it would be great if we could get all those people to pay that 1.24 million dollars and not make it higher. But we still have to raise these rates and we still have to get this done. We're mandated by Penn Vest, plus we have these projects that we need to do, and we don't have the money. Nobody ever wants to do stuff like this. I work in a nonprofit healthcare sector and I've wrote a lot of different funding and grant efforts issued for the Cares Fund. There's the American Rescue Plan Act, if you're aware of it. There's a lot of money there, resources to help in efforts like these that you can apply for to offset some of these costs. And, I mean, I can literally sit here and say, I've gotten over a million dollars for the Cares money through all my attempts, so I'm sure I can't, it's an easily acceptable, but I'd look into that more to help this.
Thank you. We do, you're aware of that. I, I think the, the issue that, and I want to thank Mr. Walker for your research and all your work. I mean, you've gone above and beyond, I know it's kept you up at night, and you've called me, after you've been up, you've been up at night, then you've called me and, and, so I've had several.
Share my pain, please.
I have other pain and I appreciate your efforts too. I mean, I don't think, it's the hardest thing is that you know you have these services, but if they're, if, we're, the thing that drove, we're doing these improvements. We did the line, we're going to the plant, you know, we're making improvements. If there's other improvements that are going to have to be paid.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know, Dan or Rob, any other comments or Rich, any comment? Whether we just put a couple of proposals together, Cal, and, and, and discuss those? I mean, it's got to happen.
Well, if you're going to do something next year, you have more than the time because you'd have to reopen the budget.
I know that.
You know, then you'd have to get a double in by the first week of February.
I think it's the first week, first or second week of February.
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
February fifteenth.
Fifteen.
Cal, I have one question. If Pennsylvania Water, I was going to suggest one for them to shut off, but is, for them to do that, are they backed up by state law or federal law or something so they're, they don't get in, you know, the?
I'm really not sure what you're asking. You talking about?
Yeah, he's thinking if they could, if they could, if they could shut the water, because
I think other than moratorium, I don't think they can.
Or they take it upon themselves to shut the water off?
I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that that's state back because they're PUC, PUC. And that that's their normal process the other nine months of the year, which is PUC controlled. And the PUC has told them that there is this out for townships that want to take the liability during this three winter months. But as you can, everyone in this room has to agree, that would just be crazy for us to do that because.
But in the other nine months, they're operating under the authority of the PUC.
My guess is that's right.
That's what.
Matt, can you hear me at all?
Matt, did you hear, Cal?
I can hear, but harder to hear him than you can hear mine. You might have to relit.
Matt, do you have any, do you have any comment on this?
Any comment on that, Matt?
No, no, I mean, Cal and I have talked about it. I know we have a meeting set up with John Mauer right, right after the first of the year to sit down and really try and look at what our options are. Again, we have, you know, we have some time under to reopen the budget, but yeah, I mean, it's definitely an issue in terms of the shut off. You know, legal, you know, that issue really should stay pretty consistent, other than the fact that there's, you know, the moratorium, the pandemic, the COVID. I mean, that kind of threw everything off for everybody, but the normal winter moratorium and non-shut off, that has gone on for years and years. Now, I do believe that's more of a PUC regulation than an authorities act regulation, but I know that legal tax will do it during that timeframe, just because of liability reasons. So I think, I think there's definitely things to look at. It's, it's, the issue of the rate difference between us and EBMA needs to be fixed now, you know, immediately. I'm not sure why that has gone on, but that needs to be corrected. But yeah, I'm going to sit down with Cal, with John Mauer, and see what our options are and then come back and support.
Okay. And if we have to have a meeting, especially to address it, we will.
Okay, well, let's go through that then. It was just mentioned that we would have to open up the budget. Well, no, we would just have to open up the sanitary side of the budget.
Just the sanitary.
And if that is reopened, it would be for the purpose of including this rate increase on the income side of the budget as well as the expense side of the budget. So it's really just playing with numbers, but we have to do it because then there has to be a twenty-day public comment, public comment period, which would take us to the end of January. And then for that rate to be voted through at the board, could that then be done first week of February and still get this into DCED? Because February fifteenth is the absolute we're done day. Now, I want to, I want to address something that Mr. Dukic just said because he's right. We, and this also, this also goes into what Patty Hartman's question was about. We're getting one point, well, about six, six point seven, one point four something?
Give it to him.
And I always forget the acronym. What is it again?
ARPA.
ARPA, right. Darn, I just can't get that in my head. George and Patty, we haven't, the board has not decided on how to spend this money. There's only certain things that it can be spent on. The board has not had a discussion on this, and that was for a reason. We've got new board members coming in. We felt unfair to start that discussion two months ago because here we go. We've got elections and now we have a resignation. So those discussions will definitely be done in January and February. But understand that that's going to really only take down the next necessary increase that Penn Vest is going to hit us with in January of twenty-three. And that's a doozy, thirteen and a quarter. That's on the minimum. That's for everybody to pay that. So what we're hoping to see there is too, that if we get ahead of this with money that we have brought in through a rate increase now, and we can show Penn Vest that our budget is higher than it was this year, twenty-two, and then if we can also factor in the money that we're going to save from not having to operate these two, this pump station in Boston, which has been costing us a fortune in the past two years, nor operating the Boston Sewage Treatment Plant, which costs quite a bit of money, that can factor in against the thirteen twenty-five that Penn Vest is going to want us to raise in twenty-three. So in other words, if our costs are going down, we don't have to raise our.
Well, you have enough, you'll have.
You'll make up for a good part of that mandated raise in twenty-three. Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Does that make sense what I just said?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's, that's my thinking.
And I think you use some of the money that we've received from the program to offset some of these costs. I think we talked about that. That's a possibility. But we still need the, we don't want to, because once that money goes away, it's away. And these issues are still going to happen perpetually. We still need a plan to address some of these issues.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I, I'm, you know, I know we have a meeting, we had a committee meeting on that and, you know, set another meeting and ruled.
Okay.
Okay. I know we have a meeting on Monday, a regular meeting.
So, a, a meeting with.
Matt and?
With Matt and John and the sanitation committee. The makeup of that committee to be decided.
Right.
Because that committee is going to change. And so I'm meeting with, with those guys on, on the sixth, was that a Thursday? Yeah, that's this coming Thursday. I can't remember the time. Is it eleven o'clock, Matt? I don't remember.
No, no, it's not my idea. It's, we can, I can't, Rob, it's.
No, no, don't do it. Don't do it.
I have it at one o'clock.
One o'clock. So we'll include, we'll include the sanitation committee on that and then we'll finalize this, this crazy rate thing. We got to get this, we got to get that done so we can open this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one twenty-three authorizing Elizabeth Township to request eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars in grant funding from the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission for property improvements near the Bu- grant of this stuff, boat launch with the township in kind labor match to ninety-six thousand, four hundred dollars.
So, no.
Motion by Mr. Dr. Walker.
Second.
Second by Rob Rock. Any discussion?
Yeah, a little bit, just for Patty's.
Yeah.
Patty's wanted you, and she, she made a good point. From my understanding, Patty, in order to move forward with this grant, we had to have a resolution that we're going to do this. And so that's really why this is on the board, on the books. The ninety-six-four matching in-kind labor match is interesting in that it has to do with also value of the property and other things that have been already taken care of. So we're hoping we don't have to throw a whole lot of money at this to get that eighty, eighty-two thousand dollars. Now, I guess the real question is what needs to be done down there? Do you, I didn't see the grant. I don't know what was put on it. Can you explain a little bit to the public as to what are the things that you're anticipating?
Sure. So the idea is for me to have this, can you hear me back there? So the Bu-.
I don't think it's on very much.
Hello?
That's better.
The Bu- of this boat launch that currently exists, township owns property, if you're staring at the river, on both sides, a pretty substantial amount of property. The idea was to mostly clear brush trees, lay out some organic paths, make some more accessible areas near the river to fish, and to pull small crops off other than the boat launch, possibly add a few benches for folks to walk to the, to the woods and rest. Maybe long-term, some little picnic pavilions. That's not in the grant though. That might be further development, but that's only all it is. So the nice thing was that all that can be done by our Public Works Department, we already discussed with the foreman, and he was down there looking at the property. We came up with value of labor, of equipment usage, depreciation and everything, and that's basically what it came to. So it's really kind of just an organic watering path that just steps off of the boat path, off the boat launch. That's really it. There's no lighting, no electrical, no utility improvements. Pretty simple.
But you have to commit to spending township resources if you receive a grant, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and the number that you have here, is that the number you submitted with the grant?
It is.
And then we would have to document that we've spent that type, that, that level fund. Uh, possibly add a few benches for folks to walk to the, to the woods and rest and maybe long term, some little picnic pavilions. That's not in the grant though. That might be further development, but that's actually all it is. So the nice thing was that all that can be done by our public works department, we already discussed with the foreman. And he was down there looking at the property. We came up with value of labor, but any equipment usage, depreciation and everything. And that's basically what it came. So it's really kind of just an organic watering path that just steps off of the boat path, off the boat launch. That's really it. There's no lighting, no electrical, no utility improvements. Pretty simple.
But you have to commit to spending township resources if you receive a grant. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
And, and the number that you have here, is that the number you submitted with the grant?
It is.
And then we would have to document that we've spent that type, that, that level fund, correct?
That's correct.
That's what I mean?
Yep, that's correct. And that's on the ground, not without a bill quickly.
Yeah, absolutely.
You send a couple of prayers down there for a week or two and it'll go.
So great. The ninety six thousand four hundred, that's no money out of our pocket. That's just purely the labor or the value of the property, all that. Now, is there a deadline on this? Why we put on tonight's agenda?
Yeah, it's the thirty first. So we had new letters from Red, that Senator Brewster Riddle, this received it today, so that was included. Uh, the application, we're overriding it tonight down to Harrisburg. Uh, it was just, you know, ragging up all the information. Uh, K L makes did most of the application. They did some of the preliminary site drawings. And all that didn't cost the Penn State anything either. That was all part of the repair.
Okay, perfect.
I just wanna ask, I didn't know there was a boat ramp in Dunavista. Is this guy by Judy Marshall's machine, machine shop? All the way out past the, okay. I wasn't aware of this one either.
Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Commissioner what?
Yes.
Commissioner Alteri? Commissioner Roderick?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyer?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, not expenditure consent. Motion convene, it was with township civil service commission to create an eligibility list for patrolman class C. I need a motion, please.
Sub move.
Uh, Dan?
Second.
Uh, second, Rob. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna feign ignorant here. Uh, can you, can you express what, what really this is about?
Do you wanna comment on that?
Absolutely. Um, it, it's about budgetary responsibility and in the event, similar to what the commission's dealing with tonight, and they have an unexpected retirement or resignation, and someone moves on to another career or for whatever reason decides it's not for them. We would have an eligibility list for a two-year period that would allow to us to immediately fill that vacancy as opposed to blowing up the budget with overtime costs, uh, gap coverage and things that are just unexpected if we don't have an active list. As you're aware, in any profession, uh, it takes, you know, sometimes as long as maybe two months to hire an employee. When you get into law enforcement and the certifications and even the process for civil service, that timeframe increases. And we want, of course, the best qualified, uh, most talented candidates who would have met in a valid area. So that's what we're gonna try and do, have an active list for a twenty four month period.
So the class E is eligible?
According to our collective bargaining agreement, a class E is a entry level police officer.
Also, thank you, Chief. Comment on the, on the new collective bargaining agreement. There was a stipulation regarding, uh, people that took the, uh, Matt helped me out with the firmist. Let's thought out. Would be, uh, the, in the most recent collective bargaining agreement, remember we talked about having that if folks were, if people were going to retire, if they were.
Yeah, the drop.
Drop plan. So if someone had discussed the drop plan, you're gonna have a, you're gonna need to be able to fill that. And I think that was one of the motivations to do this.
Yes, also the drop plan is cost neutral to the municipality, and it could allow us to backfill, um, with, with a, a new person while the other person is, uh, entering into their drop room.
Yes. Thank you, Matt. Chief, appreciate it.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, motion to accept a resignation of Commissioner Andrew Coon.
Sub move.
Dan, second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
Top set.
Roll call, pardon, we don't need roll call. Just, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. At this point too, I'd like to announce that anyone from Ward.
Shannon's?
Three?
Three.
I think it's Ward three. Yeah, if you were interested, Ben, and maybe Christine, Christine, you can put this in the daily Valley, uh.
Mont Valley.
Mont Valley news for us that any interested member of that ward could, uh, submit a letter to Mr. Butler.
We don't put data on that part?
Uh, you know, obviously, we wanna do this as quick as we can. A week or so, you know, a week.
Yeah.
Uh, send a letter of interest and, uh, we'll move on as quickly as we can.
To send it to, uh, attention, break.
Correct about our contribution. Close that on the website? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Where else does that get advertised?
I don't think it's that.
Mont Valley?
That's, that's the paper we use for all our fun. And then we put it on our website and then we put it on Facebook.
On Facebook. Okay.
So you guys are officially advertising this? Cause that's not on the agenda here. That's why I asked.
Advertising. I'm just directing him to put it, post it on our website. And we, I referenced the newspaper to make sure included that in the order.
I just asked, cause it wasn't on the agenda and you guys were speaking of it, so that's why I asked.
No, I didn't recommend a paid advertisement.
Understand. That's why I asked.
Okay, I was trying to say.
I agree with that. Mr. Walk needs it.
We all need it. Oh, you, yes, you had a comment. Thank you for reminding. Uh, Matt, do you wanna comment, uh, regarding the investigation that you have regarding residency? I think we had a, a question from, uh.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to make your hire towards, uh.
Mr. Duke.
But I, I mean, you helped me also twice. And as I explained, I mean, I wasn't trying to be, um, non transparent. I mean, the scope of my investigation is everything. Uh, I've had people contact me and say, you need to talk to this person. I've had people contact me and say, you need to talk to me. Uh, I've looked, I've done public record searches. I've reached out to each and every one of the, uh, current commissioners as well as the incoming commissioners and had discussions with them on various items. So I mean, like, the scope is, is everything that I can, the way the case law reads, if you're reading on residency, uh, where you say you live, where your public records say you live, those types of things don't matter. It's actually a fact based investigation and a fact based determination. Uh, based on things like, you know, where are your clothes? Where do you brush your teeth? Where do you intend to go at the end of every night? How often are you there? So it's sort of a weird, you know, you can't just say it's limited to public records or just limited to the fact that a commissioner says, yeah, this is where I live. You really have to go a little bit deeper and talk to people and, and, you know, people that, that know, uh, where this person has been. So yeah, that investigation is ongoing. Uh, and I'll be reporting back to the board upon conclusion.
The, the other thing that Mr. Duke, if you comment, did anybody know, I'll, I'll comment for myself. I listened to Mr. Kuzma and I, I'm not sure if that's why he resigned. I mean, what I.
Are we gonna learn the reason for his resignation?
Again, the resignation, it was in the newspaper.
There, there's a reason for that.
Well, again, I, I don't know. All I can tell you is that I listened to what he said and why he was last meeting, that he said he lived where he lived.
So what you're stating is up until today, you have no recollection of anything related prior to that.
Well, all I can say is that the last, the last meeting, it was brought up by, uh, an individual member of the community by investigating the residency issues of, uh, commissioners. At that point, Mr. Kounis was directed to investigate that, and he is in the process of doing that as he indicated. So once that's in, and once that investigation is concluded, then we will, the public will know what happened. Now, as far as what answering your question, you said that any, I don't know myself. I assume that people tell the truth. They live in a ward, if they live in Ward three, I live in Ward one. I mean, I assume that people tell the truth. So if we find out that he's not telling the truth, it's, it, you know, at that point.
Is there sanctions then if there's?
Again, I don't know what the legality is of that. Obviously, uh, leave that to our counselor, but, uh, my, my big thing is, cause when you say the word transparency, that's what I'm about, and I'm about honesty. So if people don't tell the truth, that's a problem. And, and I don't, and, and again, my understanding why you resigned was not relative to that issue. However, if it is that the investigation by our solicitor determines that that's something that was there, I can't, you know what I mean? He's resigned and the board accepted. So, now if anybody else wants a comment. So, but thank you for your follow up, and I promise you that we will have a summary of this. But I live on four two six Highland Drive, lived there for about thirty six years. That's what I know. Spending to write this motion to draw the twenty twenty two general fund budget and the twenty twenty two sanitation budget, please. I need a motion.
Sub move.
Dan?
Second.
Second, Tom. Any discussion?
Can I, uh, answer that?
Yeah, please do.
So Patty, you asked.
Forget about you, Matt.
You asked about the ARPA funds, correct? So when we first thought the budget ran through the Highness Committee, we had three or four meetings. Uh, we weren't sure how to handle the ARPA funds, cause we had received half of them this year, receiving half next year. We spent none of it. So I put in a number, uh, after the last meeting, just to get it up, onto the website and then get the archives into the, you know, Mont Valley two for the twenty day review period legally, so we can have a talk by the end of the year. I've made four changes to the budget since then. So the ARPA one uh, was on the advice of our accountant, saying that we need to put the entire amount in for, as a revenue, and the entire amount in as an expense, which I did. So that, you have a copy of that new budget is on the website currently. Uh, and I, each time I made a change, I posted it again onto the website. But just for transparency, I also added plate capturing system in the, in the lease, under the lease expenses for thirty eight thousand dollars to finish two more intersections for plate capturing, so that all four of our main intersections into the township have, uh, have camera wiring. I added thirteen thousand dollar right of way payment for Omega Rail. That's a, that's an annual payment anonymous for O'Farrell. So after we posted the draft budget, I received an invoice from Omega Tram, Omega Rail for thirteen thousand, and that's an annual issue. So I added that.
Do you wanna explain what that is, Chris?
Yeah, that's, well, that was part of the, um, right away for a lifetime for the first phase, it was five thirty seven plan for the pump station. So in order to run those lines, we had to acquire right away several properties. So that's, that was one I just wasn't aware of, cause I'm still fairly new, I feel like. So we added thirteen thousand as an expense. That's on the sanitation budget. And then the last one was a, uh, ten thousand dollar repair number, and that's probably a high number to be honest, but that's for the, uh, serum filling that was just sold to them. So the end of contract is we have more responsible for repairs. Uh, I don't think it's all repairs, half, 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 yeah, half of the repairs. So I, uh, I took a number of ten thousand. Kind of randomly, to be honest, but I wanna make sure it was enough, but not too much. Add that, that was added also. So those are the only changes. So the ARPA funds canceled over that now.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Walk?
Yes.
Commissioner Alteri?
Yes.
Commissioner Roderick?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyer?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Motion to accept the twenty twenty two township insurance policy from Wilson Bond Agency Inc.
Sub move.
Uh, Rob Roderick?
Second.
Second, Dan. Any discussion?
No, other than, uh, uh, well, Dan, you got time. We had an extensive meeting on Saturday to go through this. And, uh, this is really difficult. It's really difficult. The insurance policies are interesting. If you read your car policy, it's interesting. We'll multiply that times sixty five pages.
The best way to describe this, you know, five previous years, we were paying roughly a hundred and forty thousand a year. Last, we dropped it down to under a hundred and twenty thousand premium, and now we dropped it down this year to ninety one thousand roughly. So by shopping at these last couple of years, the premiums have come down drastically and actually the coverage has gotten better. So I thought, uh, I was, I was real happy with the policy that we had.
The only question I have, Dan, to be brutally honest, is it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That was prior to us being here, but.
Yeah. And, and now it's, you know, a savings of fifty thousand dollars?
And we've done that with a lot of other things too, not just insurance. Yeah.
I understand. Just a concern about that. Roll call, please. Commissioner Walk?
Yes.
Commissioner Alteri?
Yes.
Commissioner Roderick?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyer?
Yes.
President Rock?
No.
Uh, number four, motion to pay Nicholas Algeri, Penn State intern, two thousand dollar stipend for three hundred hours of marketing and administrative services in calendar year twenty twenty two. Any a motion, please?
Sub move.
Second? I'll second, I'll second here. Discussion. Come on first.
I, I wish I had my computer here. I forgot to bring it with me.
Well, we now, I don't let Mr., sort of address Scott's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. When, when I read, when I read this young man's proposal for what he's gonna try to get done, like, board commissioners didn't do that much in the last four years.
Well, well, let's. Let's first of all, talk about, and now with Mr. Butler, because he was approached by this resident of the community first, and a student second, who's looking to garner some college credit for an internship. And irregardless of whether that individual's a son is, uh, or the, is it the person that's on this board, it's his son, the person who's a resident of the community, he's in college, looking to improve his skill set. And Mr. Butler went with him and laid out specifically some of the things that we would want, uh, for this internship. Now, this is, since I've been here, this is the second internship we've had, so this is nothing like it's new. We had an internship when I was first here.
There was.
And there were, there were three, right? There's been three. So we do offer this as a, as an opportunity, but I want you to read some of those things we talked about.
Sure. So leading up to this, Nick Algeri did approach me about possible credits. Now, it was either gonna be a three credit or a six credit. Um, internship. He's a senior at Penn State, creator Allegheny in the Keysport. And, um, he want, and he's required to do an internship. So he approached me and we had a discussion about what his major was, what his abilities were, and of course, what he wanted to learn and how he could help the township. So he's a marketing administration major, and, uh, so he tasked me with cover, cover up six deliverables. That's a requirement. This, this, he wanted to do a free, a three hundred hour six present internship. So that's what we were shooting for, but that was all based on the approval from his professor. So we, I worked on six deliverables, so the marketing and administrative, business related. Uh, they, they broke out about half to half, but I'll read them to you real quick. Uh, after I did the deliverables, uh, I sent, I had to do an objective, a learning method, a deliverable, a due date and a frequency of submission. And this was required for the class, basically two classes. And I sent that to his professor. We've had multiple discussions over the last couple of weeks about it. Uh, she wanted to make sure that, that the, um, deliverables met his, met the class requirements, and then it was up in next to, to match for like previous classes to that internship, just typical internship stuff. And, uh, she, she asked me to clarify a few things, especially on the deliverables, that's her most important component of creative, creative budget. So what we came, and this has been approved out of today by, by Penn State, now it's up to the commissioners to approve. The first one is to create, uh, a marketing guide, uh, including, uh, so the marketing guide would have, this is for the comp plan. So we have a big marketing component in the comp plan. Uh, the first thing, uh, the, the first one would be, I'll try to keep this short. Uh, it's include to, uh, create a guide that will be submitted to his professor. Uh, then it puts summary, cost analysis, timeline, stakeholders, necessary resources, return on investment measurement, criteria, and a feasibility rating. So there would be, for each marketing initiative, it would have all of those components, estate components, and it would piece those together and use that to move forward with our comp plan, marketing initiatives. That's one. The second one's very similar. It's, um, it's a, uh, initiative to also create a, like a project or a marketing guide with the school district. So this is something Dr. Rockwell and I started already with, uh, the superintendent and some of the, some of the school board members, uh, basically talk to most stakeholders and create a project, marketing plan that would benefit the district, students, residents of the township. Can't tell you what that is at this point, but these tasks are going out there, having a discussion with, with the school district. Uh, third, the third, uh, project is to develop video and marketing, or I'm sorry, to create sixty to ninety second promotional videos of the township assets and the community assets for use in social media and on the website. And I'm thinking things like Trail, uh, the beauty coal, but all our assets, the community center.
Things that would really relate to the comp plan. We thought when he came, we thought, you know, we have a lot of these things, like, you know, right away, the marketing piece of getting the comp plan off the ground. We thought it would be a really great opportunity to show him. And he seemed like he, he's cut the bill again.
Sure.
Can you go through the other?
Yeah, I just have.
Go ahead, take a read of it. Me, sure, please?
Uh, so the, the other one's, um, stormwater related. We talked a lot about stormwater in twenty twenty one. Uh, he's gonna be tasked with developing the stormwater system mapping and condition recording, uh, for, and he's gonna put that all into our, entering our G I S system. So he's gonna, that's gonna be some film work that's gonna have out there, uh, catch based. uh, catch base of stormwaters, erosion control, things like that. Um, each of these are about fifty hours each, so he'll be able to get that map started, something we're a little bit involved on. Number five is, uh, finalize governing document for the Elizabeth Township Recreational Committee. The intern will create a one-page guide for each event class that will include a summary, cost analysis, timeline, stakeholders, necessary resources, feasibility rating. The intern will also submit the results of all surveys that are interviewed, you know, so he's gonna interview the residents, he's gonna work with Jamie Montgomery, who's already started working on some bylaws for the committee, and we want to get the recreation stuff going again. And then, number five, number six, is the last one, he's gonna work with me to create a capital approval plan, something I've been talking about for quite a while, so I have a, I have a gigantic list of things that we need to do, and we need a capital approval plan in order to, you kind of, you kind of run those costs over five, five to ten years, figure out how you're gonna pay for it, when you're gonna get it done, so he's gonna work with me on that for at least fifty, sixty hours, so that's, that's the plan.
One other thing I just want to mention, too, you know, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Butler and I have talked about, and that's building capacity within our, our staff and some of the folks, we have, I mean, Jessica Grumlin was an intern that worked for us, she's now working, had her MBA, she's doing remarkable work. I mean, and to me, that builds capacity within the organization, and to find young people that are interested in doing this work, that live in our community, that are part of our community, that's what we want, because then they're gonna stay here, they're not gonna leave, and they're gonna help bolster and support us going forward. So I look at six dollars an hour for, for three hundred, or whatever the hours is, I'm sure it's gonna be a lot more than that, sign me up, and he's a nice young man, and, and I would urge anyone, if you know individuals who are in college, graduate programs, that want to contribute to this community and do outstanding work to help us move forward, let them contact Mr. Butler, and we'll look and talk to talk to them, I mean, that's a small amount to pay, and I, I get, I get very disgruntled when I see people use social media to slam this kind of activity that we endorse because it's helping our community, and that's what we're about, and this young man wants to contribute that, and sign me up.
Well said, well said, Mark.
So, uh, roll call, please.
Greg, is there a deadline on this for the reason why it was on tonight's, um, agenda?
Yeah, he needs to start on January tenth, so it's tied on on the third, cause the third is the big, big agenda at this point. Uh, so I decided to put it on tonight, and it'll be done by April twenty.
It's a quick, it's a quick term.
Yeah, fifteen weeks.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please. Commissioner Walk?
Yes.
Commissioner Alteri?
I'm saying.
Okay. Commissioner Roderick?
Yes.
Commissioner Poyer?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's, that's amazing, when I was reading that this afternoon, I just, I just, I read it, I, I just couldn't believe, that, that's quite an undertaking, that sounds like a doctorate program, not a bachelor program.
A motion to adjourn, please?
Add one more, add one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rob, please. Just, just-
No, I, you know, Rob, I apologize, this is your, officially your last, we bought last, we bought last year, but-
I, I just, I, I would like to, um, just address one thing, the housekeeping issues for the board, uh, President Rock, and, um, I have three more days as commissioner, and it's been a great experience, but I also sit on two more boards also, and those terms don't expire for a couple of years. I believe it's instrumental that a sitting commissioner needs to be on those boards to communicate with the board, I mean, you know, the, the things we've worked through with, with serums and with Elizabeth Borough Sanitary Authority, like I said, my terms don't expire, I don't have to resign because I can, you know, we've had residents do these before, and things, but it's just, I mean, I, I really feel it's instrumental that we have a commissioner, so I, you know, I, I'd like to officially resign both the Elizabeth, um, Borough Sanitary Authority Board and the Serums Board for the ambulance service, because we are the largest community in, in serums for, and I, I do believe we should have a commissioner, I mean, like I said, it's, you know, I, I resigned with sadness, but it's, it's, it's best for our community, it's best for our township that a commissioner do that, and the, the sanitary board meets the second Tuesday of the month at two o'clock, and the serums meets the third Thursday of the month at six o'clock. And, you know, I, I, I wanted to do it tonight because we, you know, there was still some business with the boards and meetings, and I, I had to go to December meetings, but I wanted to make sure that there was some continuity, so whenever you guys meet the first Monday of the year, you guys can look into commissioners and make those appointments to those boards, so somebody, there will be continuity for the, cause there's a lot going on with the Borough Sanitary Authority, and the same thing, like I said, with, you know, with serums, so that way you could make those appointments the first meeting of the year, you know, with commissioners that are in or existing on that, so I'd like to turn in my resignation to those two boards.
Well, we need to address the agenda, cause it wasn't on the agenda.
Yes.
So, I don't know where to-
Just have to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, well, let's make a motion to, uh, to amend the agenda.
Sub move.
Uh, so we have reached the second, Dan, uh, all those in favor? Oh, we have public comment, any public comment? Yes, sir.
Chris Tomo, one twenty-seven, Brown Street, um, mine is just directed to Rob, I just, to have eight years of service to the community, uh, I wanted to thank you for your service to the community, uh, some of the key things that he did bring up with us was, uh, the gas rates for some of the local residents, uh, some, some of the landowners out there were in jeopardy of losing their property, especially in Ward six, definitely helped them. K nine was one hundred percent, you know, your idea and brought it in, uh, I just wanted to thank him for his service and, uh, before serving in, in your place.
And Chris, right back at you, I wish you the best of luck as commissioner.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate that. Any other public comment regarding that? Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We accept your, so I guess we change the agenda, now we have to vote on his resignation from those two committees, and those are the sanitary board and the-
EMBA sanitary board and Serums Board of Directors.